Working it. Yeah, I don't know.
Sense of civility and love, mutual respect for our city.
Yeah, I'd like to get the train on time. People don't want to go on time.
Mayor, are you okay asking people to turn their phones off?
This one doesn't, isn't working. It didn't, it hasn't worked.
I'm gonna call you each other.
I'm the only one.
I, uh, I believe in freedom.
What's that?
I believe in freedom. Now, you're not in church, see. Now, in church, they have to turn it off. If you're there to worship God, but we're not here to worship God.
Just as a reminder, this is a workshop, so we are, we are not live, but we are recording. So this is a workshop. The council meeting will be live.
Okay, uh, can I call this meeting to order? Any invocation? No invocation.
For what?
Thank you, allegiance. Thank you, allegiance. In the United States of America, under the Republican Party's hands, foundation of our God, and the resolve of liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Yes, welcome.
Councilmember Boges.
Here.
Councilmember Purdon.
Here.
Councilmember Carr.
Here.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Here.
Councilmember Corey.
Here.
Councilmember Folic.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Here.
Okay, now, we're privileged to have public comment. Please come to the microphone and introduce yourself.
This is a different-looking microphone. Hello, everyone. My name is Tamika Peters. I've resided in Southwest Florida for 21 years. I'm originally from Los Angeles, California. I had an amazing career in government. I worked for Collier County Government and, uh, um, the metro, Collier Metropolitan Planning Organization. So I had my public service. I went on to the City of Naples. I worked in the mayor's office as the Public Information Officer. I know a few of you. I know, um, Jesse. I used to work with Mike at the City, Antonio, and I knew the mayor before he became the mayor at the Lions Club. So, thank you. So the reason why I'm here today is that my husband and I have been very fortunate enough to purchase Doug Seafood. It's a local seafood market that has been in place for 11 years. It's located right off of Benita Beach Road, off to the back. You can't see it, but it's one of the best seafood places you can eat. We're known for a lot of specialties. So I just, I heard about the, the potential mileage rate increase. I became concerned. So as a business owner, we do pay our rent plus the CAM. It's kind of like an HOA where you pay for the common area. So of course, that fee will be passed along to us as well. So I just wanted to express, look out for the business owners. As you know, with the restaurant industry, during the summer months, it's very slow. In the winter, of course, we're booming. We do have a lot of staff who depend on our, um, our, our funding to support their families. So thank you very much for your consideration, and I look forward to seeing you at the restaurant and meeting each of you individually.
Thank you.
What's it, what's it called again?
It's Doug. Doug Seafood. Doug Seafood. It has a seafood market on one side. Yep, it's been around. And, uh, we plan to keep the food the same, only change the ambiance, so there's a vibe when you're coming in. And Doug will be joining us in the winter, part, working with us part-time, so stop by and come see Doug. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, we said strategic priorities. Who's introducing this?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, at this time, I'd like our Finance Director to come forward. And we've got a brief presentation, um, followed by, we're gonna walk you through, um, the operating budget and as well as the CIP. Each of our directors are here to give you an update on the CIP projects. And then we'll be looking for some input from Council as to further any direction. As a reminder, this is a workshop, um, so there will be no final decisions in this meeting. We're just looking for discussion, general direction, and some items that you'd like us to follow up on, bring back. Should there be anything discussed in this meeting that you want to move forward on in a formal pattern? We would ask that you reserve to make motions during the City Council meeting, and we've prepared an agenda item to address that at that time.
Good, thank you. Yes, Lisa.
Good afternoon. Um, we'd like to review at each of our budget meetings, the remaining budget calendar, so that everyone, um, makes note of it for their calendar. But anyone who's interested as well can tune in or either show up and provide us their input. Today is Wednesday, August 7th. This is the 4:00 PM. This is the budget workshop. We're gonna continue presenting to you all, uh, the draft budget and obtaining feedback about that. Tonight, immediately following the City Council meeting, I populated at 5:30. 5:30 is our normal time. We're gonna have our City Council meeting. That does have an agenda item on there to discuss budget, um, should Council wish, in any directions that you choose to give staff at that time. Wednesday, August 21st, which is a regular City Council meeting, there will be budget updates at that time. As you all know, we start our process and then we continue to update with any new information that we receive. We receive state economic data from the state ongoing through our September adoption. So we bring all, continue to bring all that to you, um, every two weeks when you get together for your council meeting. Wednesday, September 4th, at 5:30, that's an evening meeting, that will be our tentative budget hearing, which will include a mileage rate vote. And then September 18th, at 5:30, that's an evening meeting as required by Florida law. That will be our final budget hearing, and that will include our final mileage rate vote. The strategic priorities. The draft budget that you have, that you presented at our last meeting and we'll continue to talk about tonight, is based upon the strategic priorities that have been adopted by Council. These are in your budget, and particularly tonight, we're gonna talk quite a bit about the capital improvement program. We organize your capital improvement projects by strategic priority, so you can see where those fall with respect to the priorities that you all have set for us. Improving stormwater management, transportation, community aesthetics, environmental protection, strengthening, strengthening and enhancing city financing, and strengthening and enhancing, uh, community relations, as well as governmental transparency and economic development.
And, and just as a reminder, when we start after the next fiscal year, once we start, we're going to bring this again to you to see if there would be any suggested changes or revisions and priority or additions. That would be at that time to change those. Right now, the drafted budget is based on these priorities.
Yes, and it is always a good idea to, uh, to look back and check and make sure that these are still what, uh, the priorities you all set. You had asked us at the last meeting to provide you a summary of the last two significant hurricanes that have impacted the City of Benita Springs. What we have done here and what we have displayed for you is, the first column is Hurricane Ian, and please note that asterisk, because we are still in the process of developing project estimates for our city facilities. And as you all know, we're just now wrapping up Irma, so it will go on for a few years. Unfortunately, that's the way it works with FEMA. We're happy to have them as a partner. We're happy that they provide funding for us for our projects to reconstruct our, and repair our facilities, but it does take time to do it exactly the way they want it. So what we have here is, the first line item is debris removal and emergency protective measures. As you can see, Hurricane Ian, and those are final numbers. Hurricane Ian was roughly 8.5 million as compared to Irma, which was 7.7. Not really a surprise, but to see it quantified gives you an idea is, we did have significant more impact, excuse me, and more debris with Ian. The next line item is repair and reconstruction of city facilities. Again, when our facilities are damaged, say our fences, our lightings, you know, any building damages, again, we go through that process and we repair them and/or reconstruction as we are allowed to do through FEMA guidelines. And we need to do the, bring them back up to operational levels. So, um, in total to date, and again, I want to stress, Ian and particularly expenditures to date are not final, but they're 9.6 million for Ian and about 8.8, a little under for Irma. What we have displayed here for you, you also have in your packet, you have it in your budget, and you have in your packet again tonight, your budget workshop packet. This is what we call the General Fund Continuation Budget. What staff does is take a look at, um, operating at the same level of service projected into the next fiscal year, and we give you a, um, a percentage of increase for the same level of service, and that is 2.98%. Very good considering where our state and our local area is with respect to inflation. And then we list the individual items that actually indicate either additional in services or enhanced services in some manner. I believe we've reviewed this last time, but we're gonna review this and take your questions and have everybody's comments on it when we open it up for discussion. So that slide, just because it was so big, we put it on two slides. Again, it is online and it's in everybody's packet, but this is the remainder of the items that are being additional request or enhancement of service for this fiscal year. So what we wanted to do now, I believe, is move on to capital improvement program.
Yes, so we'd like to give you an overview of the capital improvement budget, hit on some major projects, and then, um, get some direction from you all as we move through each of these categories. So I will start with the number one strategic priority, stormwater, and ask Matt Feeney to start with that.
Good afternoon, Council. I'm Matt Feeney, Assistant City Manager. I'll start with the stormwater management. Projects in touch on the ones that, that have some activity and explain kind of where we are. So, uh, one of the first ones here is our, our neighborhood buyout program. That is wrapping up. We've purchased about 15 homes. And, uh, it's wrapping up from the HUD grant. However, we have another opportunity, which is on the City Council meeting later on this evening for another, I believe it's $4 million from FEMA that came through COVID, that could allow us to continue to purchase homes in the Quinn-Dean Downs, uh, street area that was affected by the flooding from Hurricane Irma. So that, that really kind of explains where we are with that program. The next large stormwater project that we have underway is well underway, and that is the Spring Creek, Benita Springs Golf Course Flood Improvement Project. A large percentage as you, of that project is, is already been constructed. It's being interconnected as we speak. That is the project that we entered into a developer's agreement with Baron Collier Companies to construct per our plans and then obviously sell us the, the, the improved infrastructure once it's complete. Uh, I would say, as far as the lake excavation is concerned, they're probably about 85% of the lakes have been dug. The interconnected pipe that interconnects the lakes is probably around an 80% completion point. They're making major connection points, uh, this month, really. And then, as we go into the fall and in the early winter, the off-site improvements, like the connection of Woodibis and Divot Road to the system, as well as, I believe there's six interconnected points that will help the water from the east side of Paradise Road move into the new large lake on the west side. Those improvements will be constructed and probably be wrapping up some point in the late spring or early summer of next year. So the city's infrastructure on that, it's about a $18 million project, all told, uh, is well underway and is moving along pretty well. The next project, the Quinn-Down-Dean, the names of these are, bear with me, are a little, little verbose. Quinn-Down-Dean West of Imperial Drainage Improvements. That is an $11 million HUD grant, as well as about $750,000 we received from the state in an appropriation to design drainage infrastructure in those neighborhoods around Quinn Street as well as Lime Street. The drainage, uh, design has been developed. It is in permitting as we speak. It does involve some acquisition of properties to, to serve as stormwater ponds. It, uh, it is kind of the first step in helping flood-proof those areas. Now, as you may recall, we're also buying out homes there. You know, whether you flood or don't flood in that neighborhood is a very prod, uh, property-specific problem. And if, if the goal is to prevent all flooding there, there will certainly need to be additional capital improvement projects that would involve things like levees or flood walls. Uh, but, but this is a drainage improvement. It will help to some modest degree, but it will not prevent the type of flooding that we saw with Irma without additional infrastructure improvements.
Matt, could I, can we use that $4 million that is coming in toward that?
No, it's, it's for home buyout. So, you know, I like to look at, at that neighborhood and the flooding there, or really truthfully, in any area. You have three ways to tackle it. You know, one is relocation, either through, you know, physical elevation of someone's home or physically purchasing it, and the folks can relocate out of the flood zone to safety. You have infrastructure. You know, in the case of the golf course neighborhood, that's a large infrastructure project that's trying to prevent flooding in the future. And then the third is really early warning. So early warning, you know, gives you the ability to say, you know, in three days' time, you know, based off of a storm like what we had, one on Saturday and Sunday, uh, the ability to communicate to folks that based on the rainfall that we're seeing, based on the forecast we're seeing, you know, you may want to, to take measures to either protect your property or to protect your, your personal being by, by relocation temporarily. So that is the predictive flood software that we, we voted through last year, and we've been utilizing that this summer storm season. It's given us a much better understanding as each one of these events threatens us as to whether we're, we're at flood risk or whether, uh, you know, based on the forecast, whether we're going to make it through without a flood event.
And are these posted on our website so that people who live in those areas can?
No. We're still beta testing that. Okay, so, another vein of our stormwater management is water quality projects. There are certainly water quality components to some of the projects I've mentioned, but the bioreactor is really just a pure water quality project. It tries to eliminate nutrients from the river. Phase two is largely complete. That was an automation phase. We've been working, uh, we got that up and running earlier this year that allows our pumps to operate off of an automated system and gives us, uh, remote, the ability to remotely control them. There's kind of a second phase to that, which has been to permit, design and permit a sub-aquous intake. Currently, the intake for the water is kind of tidally dependent. So we're, we're permitting an intake structure that actually goes below the influence of the tides and would allow us to treat water on a more continuous basis. And those plans are at a 90% phase, and they're in permitting as well. So, so we'll be probably constructing that sometime in the spring of this year as well. Additionally, some of the funds shown there could provide for, for lighting. We've, we've heard that concern about lighting the parking lot aspect of it, so some of those dollars would be available for that as well. We have not pursued the design of that to this point. Turning, let's see, to page 76, we have a series of home acquisition and home buyout programs that were generated from grant opportunities out of Hurricane Ian. Those projects, we do not have funding agreements for yet, but we are pretty confident that in the following months, uh, that some of those will start to come loose, and we will be getting grant opportunities from FEMA to do some home elevation, as well as some home buyout in the areas that were affected by Hurricane Ian. Primarily, we think it's, it's gonna be in the elevation realm. It won't actually be in the buyout vein of, of projects. So that's coming, forthcoming, but at this point, we're just in the grant request phase.
Matt, any numbers on, um, number of people that are interested in having or participating in the program?
I don't have those numbers directly. Ellie McEwen has those. As you may recall, we had to send out letters of interest, and what happened from those letters of interest was you ended up with a bona fide pool of folks. So, so those are tied to whoever responded those interest letters, so we do have that information. I just don't have it off the top of my head.
I thought I saw John here, but I don't. Um, not a great level of interest, all right?
Uh, no, I think there's, there's, there's some, there's more than no level of interest for, for sure. I just, I just don't have it off the top of my head.
So what I recalled is, we did send out a survey almost immediately post Ian, and there was more interest at that time. Of course, there's probably been some, um, transition in ownership or people moved, but, you know, since then, but we're continuing more, or demolitions, so we're continuing our outreach.
Thank you.
Do you want me to move to transportation?
Yes, please. And now we'll move on, unless there's any specific questions on the stormwater projects.
How are we maintaining these buyout demolition properties after they're done?
We've been adding them on to a mowing contract to make sure that they're mowed. I think in the future, the city can look at, uh, you know, as we, what we have seen is as, it's taken some time to be able to utilize the dollars from the federal side. It takes time to work with the first folks, you know, that were interested in participating, you know, to, to walk through the process. It's, it's laborious, but we've had enough success at this point that we've actually seen where you would buy a home and then the neighbor would actually, you know, once they see that the, the process works and that we're actually serious about buying your home for a fair market value, you would get a neighbor that would then sell. And so we've, we've actually linked a few, in a few areas, a few properties, you know, one, two, maybe three are linked together. That affords us a little bit of an opportunity in the future to look at, you know, what could be done there in terms of a water quality project or some, some type of low-impact project. There are restrictive covenants that go along with it, so you can't build buildings, you can't sell them for new home sites, because they are in the flood plain, and in many cases, they're actually in the floodway in that neighborhood.
About picnic table or?
That kind of stuff, yes, is certainly possible in the future.
We could possibly look at passive recreation is what we've been told.
Well, how about a neighborhood garden?
We could certainly consider things.
I, I, you know, I'm concerned about how we maintain these properties once we own them forever and what we can do with them, make them a little more productive or something.
Sure.
Neighborhood garden, a park, you know, so that's what we'll look into in the future, not tonight.
I, I think also, we would be looking at opportunities for additional stormwater retention, if possible. So some of those parcels that Ellen and Ellie have been able to acquire were part of a larger map where we were looking to create infrastructure for stormwater, so, so that we could help the neighborhood more. Additionally, I just wanted to share with you that, um, Region Four Director Robert Simone was planning on a trip before Hurricane Debbie. This was one of the most important sites, projects he wanted to observe. We were actually going to plan a site visit, uh, to see these, this program. So it was, um, very helpful in us giving that information to FEMA as we work through the CRS program.
Thank you. This is another place you could put bioreactors. This is another place you could put bioreactors.
Yeah, I, I think we certainly could, what the mayor was talking about, what Arlene was talking about, what, what you're speaking of are all things that we could be looking at. That, the thing you can't be thinking of is, we're gonna build a Parks and Rec gym building there, because the, the restrictions, they're really tied to the idea that, that they're in the flood plain or floodway, and so they want it to be, you know, minimal. But water quality projects, you know, like, like what Councilman Forbes mentioned, water volume, stormwater projects, like what Arlene mentioned, and certainly park amenities or, you know, low-key things like the mayor was talking about are all things that we, we should be and can consider in the future. Yes, sir?
I, I think everybody's on the right track. I, I would just say, we just need to wait a while because the, the reality is, we could get a bunch of contiguous properties, you know? Or we could, or we could have them sporadically. So until we know who's all gonna get in the program and where they're actually geographically outlined and how they're touching, saying we're gonna do A, B, or C on them really doesn't make sense. Because if they're all, if they're all in one spot, okay, great, now we can work on them. But if they're gonna be spread out, I'm not hopeful they are, but if, you know, I mean, ideally, we get all of them, but we're not going to. So we gotta, I think we need to see what we're looking at before we start talking about what we're gonna do with them exactly.
To your point, um, you know, in the very beginning, it was absolutely sporadic. And it has started to, there have been, there have been some places where it has congealed a little bit. And with this additional, uh, inflection of money, you know, there'll probably be some more areas where, you know, I don't know. And it really is a very much, I don't have a crystal ball for it, but there'll be some opportunities that will, will start to become apparent for what the mayor's talking about, for what Councilman Forbes is talking about, as well as Arlene and others, uh, as we kind of get it together.
But these properties need to be maintained in some sort of reasonable for, for the future. We own them forever now, so, thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, so moving on to transportation, um, which is strategic priority number two. Uh, so the, the biggest transportation project that we have for vehicles and really probably, you know, for the definition of the city, is this quadrant road behind the shopping center that has the Publix in the northwest quadrant of Benita Beach Road in US 41. That project goes hand in hand with future improvements that the state, um, you know, showed us with their project development and planning, design, and engineering study. And, um, really kind of helped prevent the idea of an overpass going into, to the neighborhood. So that project's been under design for some time now. Uh, there are a few pieces of, uh, property that we need from the shopping center owner, and we've been in a continuous dialogue with them over those. And we're, we're working towards, with Derek, um, being able to negotiate some form of agreement with them. Uh, that's kind of the phase as to where we are. The roadway plans are at a 90% design, which is very far along. And we are in permitting with the Water Management District, uh, as well as Lee County, because we have to do some improvements to Benita Beach Road, uh, agency. So it's, it's very far along in terms of the design and the permitting phase, and we're in a kind of a, a phase where we need to be talking to the property owner about the, the small pieces that we need from them.
Is there anything, was Angler's Paradise property, Ralph?
Nope, that part was concluded years earlier.
Okay, good.
Uh, so that should be coming, you know, sooner. I just, I know you don't see a lot of work on that, but there's been a lot of legwork that, that's gone on. The Pelican Landing Old 41, US 41 improvements. You may recall, last budget year, we added that in about this time. We, we hired a design firm to develop a 60% plan. At the time, our preliminary analysis had indicated it would be a pretty expensive project that would require some right-of-way. I'm pleased to report, uh, through some analysis and creative thinking, we're able to come up with a design that is far less expensive and does not require right-of-way beyond what we have. So at the last council meeting or the, or the one prior, uh, you authorized the designer to move into the final design and permitting phase. Uh, one of the key features of the, the modified design is it will, uh, include an additional turn lane for eastbound traffic onto US 41. The, the traffic there backs up. This is the, where Old 41 meets US 41 and becomes burnt pine or the, the access to the Publix up at the north end of the city. So we'll have to be dealing with FDOT as well as Lee County traffic signals on how we modify the traffic signal to, to accomplish that, as well as some median modifications that will take away some of the movements coming out of that intersection, but will make it a whole lot safer and, uh, address the, the safety concerns that we had there. So that will probably move to construction, you know, earliest sometime in the summer of next year. Uh, you know, more likely, probably the fall. But, uh, right now, it is moving into the final design and permitting phase. And it's not nearly as complicated as we had hoped, or not hoped, had thought it would be, so that, that's the good news. Uh, let's see. So, moving on from really roadway improvements, well, this is kind of roadway. We have the Goodwin Street Sidewalk and Drainage Project. You, you may recall, uh, this has been under a design. It involves complete replacement of the Lightner Creek Bridge, as well as property acquisition to construct an eight-foot pathway and a six-foot sidewalk, as well as drainage improvements where there really wasn't a drainage infrastructure, and, um, streetscape, you know, lighting, landscaping. So that project's been in permitting. The bridge permitting is very extensive. It involves the Army Corps of Engineers as well as the Water Management District. Uh, we are at a 60% design, which is the, the jumping off phase where we know what pieces of property we need from the individual property owners, you know, it's, it's now defined. And so in the upcoming months, we'll be back with our team to give you an update on the design and then be moving towards the right-of-way acquisition phase, which will take, you know, the better part of a year, but we'll be, we'll be moving towards that in the late fall, early winter of this year.
Who, who negotiates the first? Who negotiates the purchase in the properties?
It's a variable process. At first, it's an appraised, the damages as well as the physical property that the project needs are assigned a value by a licensed appraiser, which that's the phase we're moving into right now. Council authorizes those appraised amounts. When we have them all collected, we'll come back to you and then we will ask you for authorization to then offer those amounts to the individual property owners. From there, it will become more of a collaborative process. If we go into mediations, you know, a team will mediate a settlement and council would ultimately approve it.
And that's not in this, not in this year's budget?
Oh, it's...
Next year's budget or...
This is all within the budget and it's just a longer-type project. But it is moving into that phase, which, once you start into the acquisition phase, it takes about a year, but you move quickly into construction from there.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Pine Avenue Pathway, we received a $400,000 grant from the state about a year ago, maybe a little less. And so we advanced that project. It had been designed for some time. We had actually shelf plans. So that will connect from West Terry Street on Pine Avenue north to the baseball fields, the Little League fields. It ends up being a 10, I believe it's 10-foot wide, it might be 12-foot path that meanders along there. The one significant thing that changed from the day we designed it to being able to build it is we, you know, we own the library property. So we're able to have a little more poetic license, I suppose, with the pathways that runs along there. We'll move to, we're kind of brushing up the plans because they were a little bit old and we'll be moving to construction probably sometime in the summer for that project. West Terry Street South Sidewalk has been under design, so they've been working on the design. It's a more complicated sidewalk project. It's on the south side of West Terry from US 41 to Old 41. The right-of-way narrows in those areas. There will be right-of-way needs from property owners. There's also utility conflicts with Benita Springs Utilities because as you enclose the drainage there to build the sidewalk, we will certainly be impacting large water mains that are running through that area, as well as sewer mains that are crossing. So we are close to a 30% design and we'll be scheduling public workshops this fall to meet with the residents so that we can see of three design concepts or a hybrid. It's very similar to what we did with Goodwin Street to get some feedback as to which design or, you know, amalgamation of designs they would prefer. And then we'll be back in front of council and that project will start to move much quicker. Old 41 Strike Lane Intersection, I'm happy to report, at least as of this afternoon, the mast arms are starting to go up. That is, it's simply a traffic signal at the Strike Lane Intersection of Old 41. In addition to that, there is a sidewalk, a small sidewalk that goes on, I believe it's on the north side, that goes easterly to the endpoint of the city's right-of-way, which is the railroad right-of-way. That was a request we were able to incorporate into this project. So it's under construction, you know, it shouldn't be too much longer before the finished product shows up. And then we'll probably have folks complaining because now you have a stoplight, you can't just go freely through the intersection. However, it'll be safer.
Very good, very good.
Let's see. Rosemary Drive. Rosemary Drive, last month, we held a 30% design workshop. This project is not outside of the right-of-way lines, which is good news, so it won't require additional property. Council approved a concept at the last city council meeting and so they're moving quickly. Once you kind of get that concept approved, they're moving towards, you know, drainage designs, you know, the nuts and bolts will move into permitting and that project's moving along pretty quick. Moving pages.
I did want to reiterate that the Sun Trail Program, I want to make that clear. It's Sun Trail, not the Birch Trail. It is able to be utilized on any of the Florida Department of Transportation Sun Trails, which includes the pathway along from Fort Myers Beach to Benita Springs. That is kept at the same funding level and you did provide a letter of authorization for a match in the most current grant application that went forward. I understand that the trust for public lands is continuing to seek additional funds and so there will probably be more asks for matching funds, but as of right now, you've made the obligation, but the actual transfer of funds doesn't happen unless the grant is achieved.
The...
Ray?
East Terry Street Multi-Use Path and Drainage Improvements. You may recall Governor DeSantis came down with a giant check. Unfortunately, he couldn't cash it for $16.8 million. That is another grant-funded project. It is under design. We're at a 30% design and we have a workshop this coming Thursday, August 15th, here at City Hall, from 4:00 to 6:00 PM to get feedback on the 30% design. The project does not involve additional right-of-way takes, which makes it a little simpler for us. It really is a drainage project that has the ability to provide some pedestrian connectivity because once you install the drainage pipes, you're able to build some pathways over the top. So it's, project footprint is from Old 41 all the way to Benita Grand Drive. The heavy area of improvements are really from Imperial Parkway to Benita Grand Drive, but there are some drainage improvements in the westerly portion of it that will help with some flooding conditions that we've seen with Hurricane Irma. But honestly, we saw them with the storm that we had in June as well, where we had some ponding on East Terry Street. So again, public workshop on that is August 15th here at City Hall, 4:00 to 6:00 o'clock in the evening for, to take a look at a 30% design. Paradise Road Bike Ped Improvements. This project relies heavily on the off-site improvements of the golf course drainage project because without those, you really can't have an easily designable pathway project. So those were approved by city council a few months ago. I mentioned those off-site drainage improvements will be starting to be constructed here probably in the late fall, early winter. We will be in the process of selecting a designer for that project and moving it into a design phase and getting it designed up based on the conditions that we had from the drainage project.
So does this take care of widening Paradise to an extent and improving the drainage as well as putting in the...
So the way we conceived it, which is probably why it's so expensive, is from stem to stern of Paradise Road, that's a Navy term, when it was in the Army. From the length of Paradise Road, it is some form of drainage improvement on both sides of the roadway, curb on both sides of the roadway, F-curb, and some pedestrian pathway as well as lighting and landscaping. So the widths of the pathways could vary, you know, from a six-foot sidewalk on the east side of the road to an eight-to-12-foot path on the west side of the road. That will kind of come out as we look at the practicality of the design. I think there's some logical places where it might be wider for a stretch and then maybe narrower in other areas. But it's the length of it and its drainage improvements and curbing and, you know, roadway follows along with that when you start to tie in curb. I don't know about, you know, widening the road, maybe marginally, you know. I think what people feel on that roadway about the width is really that you have these open ditches right next to the roadway, which makes it feel far narrower. I've spent a lot of time driving up and down it with the drainage project that we have going on, but this project would be able to address that.
So right now, after the tropical storm, there was a lot of water that was east of Paradise. So is this the drainage project that...
No.
Or is that all in the what?
That's in the golf course project.
And so that's yet to be completed?
It's yet to be completed, but you've approved it. So the golf course, boy, we name these things terribly. The Golf Course Drainage Project, Stormwater Project, has six interconnective points that currently do not exist south of Wood Ibis Drive. And so currently, the water on the east side of the road of Paradise, most of the roads on the east side of Paradise, for those that aren't familiar, are private roads. If they can get their water to the public right-of-way, what is going to fundamentally change between now and this time next year is there will be places where that water can immediately go from east to west across the road and into that very large lake that we have constructed. It's 36-acre lake. Currently, that water has to go through a pretty circuitous path southward, westward, and then kind of turn northward along Cockle Shell to get into the same location. So it's traveling a much further distance in an old system that is, you know, relatively piecemeal, whereas as soon as these improvements are made, you'll have these more directive connection points. There may be some intermediate work that the city needs to do to encourage the water, you know, from High Point A to High Point B to get to those new connective points in terms of regrading the swales. But it should be a pretty drastic improvement for the water that makes it to that Paradise Road right-of-way. From there, this project leverages that and you would be able to interconnect those pipe crossings and not have to try and permit them. And that is a large advantage that this project will benefit from because the water management was already figured out and calculated with the golf course project.
And then the idea in terms of the roundabout at Maddox, is the responsibility for straightening out Paradise from the diverter road that's now been built, does that fall back on Pulte or...
Oh, yeah. That, all of that road work, the replumbing of Maddox Road to the roundabout and the temporary and the permanent conditions, that's all part of the Pulte project, not the city's responsibility there. Other than to permit it. I think, oh, wow. Just going a little further if anyone wants to. The last one, Pennsylvania Avenue Drainage and Operational Improvements, and I did, I forgot to mention Old 41 as well, those are both large asks that we have in of the HUD dollars that Lee County is administering the distribution of. So, you know, we're hopeful that, you know, one or both of those projects will be funded through those dollars. If, right now, they're in deliberations on, you know, evaluating those and as to what the merit is, but it's very likely that one or both of those will be funded. And then, you know, once they get funded, we'll be chasing them with designs and public workshops too.
We could show them pictures from this past weekend.
That concludes the...
Your four minutes are up, Matt.
That concludes the stormwater and transportation portion of this program.
Thank you, Matt. You did a good job.
Well, thank you. At this time, I'm going to ask Nicole Perino to come up. Our next is community aesthetics, but there will be some combination as well with transportation in some of those too as updates. Because some of the community aesthetics is along roadways.
Thank you, Arlene. Nicole Perino, Parks and Recreation Director. So of course, community aesthetics are parks, so that's where my projects lie. So I'll go through the projects, the bigger ones and where we're at and kind of where we're headed and what's moving along. So the first one on my list is the Lightner Creek Soccer Complex. So that is the property adjacent to the dog park. That is in the planning stages of design. So we're under design currently. The survey work has been complete, environmental assessments, because there are gopher tortoises on the property. So those are different steps we had to take to figure out what kind of design we could actually do. And so we're past those stages and now we are in that design phase. So we are working with our consultant, we're working with RBI, and getting down some basic design conceptually to figure out what we can do and then that will come to all of you, as well as doing a public workshop, as well as working with the soccer leagues to see exactly what their needs are, to really hone in on construction documents for that. So that's the phase we're in for that project currently, so it is moving along.
With that project, is there anything that can be done or that you need to help expedite the process?
To expedite the process, right now, the survey work does take a while, as long as the, as well as the environmental assessments, those are done now, so it should be moving quicker now. Our next phase will be going into those public workshops.
And when are those set for?
We don't have them set currently because I just got the, some concepts. We worked on them last week, so. But we should be moving forward with those fairly quickly.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The next item we have is the Citywide Park Lighting Conversion, the LED. Our first project in this, because this is Citywide Parks, our first project was the Skate Park LED lighting and that is complete. So that has been converted over and switched to be all LED lighting fixtures. So next on our list, we will just keep going, we're looking at park lighting, Riverside Park lighting is a big one, as well as community parks. So we're looking at those two projects following. Next on my list is the Small Recreation Building Improvements. That we did just complete right before summer camp started, actually the day before summer camp started this year. So we did cut that one a little close, but that one luckily we did get complete and that was actually a cost split between this cost center of Small Rec, Small Rec Building Improvements, as well as Laura's Cost Center of the city, major city improvements. So that was a cost split of that account to get those because we were doing items that were on that city facilities assessment list, so we checked some of those items off that list. In doing that project at the same time. So next, we have the Baseball Complex Master Plan Phase Improvement. So as you know, this project has been ongoing for the last several years and we are doing it in phases because we're working around Little League seasons. So we're stopping and going, stopping and going. So the next phases, we did just complete, a complete redo of the restroom facilities as well as the shade structures, eight shade structures for four fields. So next, we're going into the parking lot will be completely redone, as well as T-ball fields will be designed. So this is an ongoing project that you all have approved throughout the different phases. So we are just having to work around Little League for that because we don't want to impact them, as, well, as little as possible is what we're trying to do. The next one on the list is the Bandshell Renovations and Updates. So as you can probably all see downtown, the, right now, those restrooms are completely blocked off, the Bandshell building is blocked off. So that project started, well, it actually started when we resawed right before 4th of July. And then right after the 4th of July, on July 5th, we shut down the restrooms. So all of those facilities, the exterior restrooms, as well as the interior dressing rooms, all of that is being completely redone as we speak right now. So that project is underway and we'll just keep that moving forward. The next one is Island Park Insurance Improvements. That project has been designed. We are not in permitting. That's kind of a project that we do have hanging out there, but it is designed. You all have seen that design. It will, the design includes a pocket park as well as the bridge that goes from South Riverside Drive to Island Park, that bridge. So that will take some permitting because it is creating a bridge over a waterway, but that project has kind of been put on hold for some of these larger items. The next is, where are we at? Oh, the Bandshell Lawn Artificial Turf Sidewalk Paver. As Matt said, these names are kind of funny, but so that project you will see on your city... But, so that project, you will see on your city council agenda at 5:30 for a hundred and five thousand to RVI to begin this design. This includes the redesign of the Bandshell area itself. So, it's not only the artificial turf, but it does include all of those sidewalks for ADA compliancy, as well as the lighting, electrical, those items because we are needing upgraded electrical, as well as converting those lights to LED as well. So, those are included in that project. And then, but as the green sheet does state, it is for conceptual design at this time. It is not for, and we'll have to bring that back at a later date, but it's not for bidding and construction. So, that will come at a later time. So, design only at this point.
It will be important, we'll have outreach specifically to the Special Events Committee and the Veterans Advisory Board as, so that we are clear about the Isle of Flags and we're providing. Because the original park was designed with the American Legion's assistance and some funding that they had provided.
Yep. And that, that is included in the, the contract, the hundred and five thousand. That's on the council agenda next at 5:30. So, that is included in there, the community, the outreach. The Hickory Boulevard Circle Landscaping, just to touch on that, that is in, in design as well. So, that is in design currently. So, that is moving forward. The funding after that is for to construct whatever is designed. We do not have final design plans at this time.
Nicole, I'm going to have Matt go back to the former Community Hall Banyan Tree. You have some concepts that are, we had a design-build contract.
So, the former, who named these things? Former Community Hall Banyan Tree Park has been under a design-build contract. It's, it's really the design portion so that, you know, when we get a number for the build, we'll come back to you for that. They are, are working on concepts and right now, they have a concept that they're, they're going to develop a visualization video that we'll bring back to city council so that you can see, you know, tell us what you like. And then, assuming that there's acceptance of that design, then we'll move to pricing and come back for a construction contract.
Do you have any idea when that video would be done?
Relatively soon. We, we had some concepts and they've, they've had to kind of tweak it. So, there's a body of work that already exists. They're just refining it. So, I, I would say pretty soon. Yeah, sometime in the fall. The Hickory Circle, they just delivered some concepts as well, not, not video concepts. It's not that complicated, but we haven't had a chance to really review the concepts and give some feedback. But that's where that stands, and it is under a design contract.
The curbing in that, on that section's been busted up. That would be a different project.
We, we've priced the curbing through a standard type of construction acquisition process. And the folks that have given us the prices, they've come back exceptionally high because there's a lot, you know, they're, they're weighing in a lot of risks. So, really what we're, we're looking at internally is trying to maybe deal with this on a, on a more case-by-case basis. Because when we've had people quote it, and we've had a couple of different entities quote it, the numbers come back and it's, the work, they're, they're pricing too much risk into what the work is. And so, we're, we're looking at a different way to deliver that project.
What do you mean by risk?
They're overthinking the job.
Overthinking the job.
Which translates to an expensive price.
You're not worried about getting run over on that busy street?
It's not that. They're, they're worried, they're, they're overthinking the level of repair. Correct, correct. So, we're, we're looking at trying to do it a little cheaper with a, a smaller contractor that maybe is willing to take on more risk. Because we, we have quoted a couple of different firms and it's just, the numbers have come back too high.
It is an expensive project for sure. Sure work, yeah, I guess. Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
And just circling back to the Hickory Boulevard, that project, the design currently is just for the circle. It does not include Beach Park, which will eventually be included as well. So, I just wanted to let you know that that, that will be added in as, as part of this project. Next, we have the Soccer Complex Concession and Restroom Building. So, that project went underway this summer as we are closed for maintenance. We close every year to do maintenance to the fields. We closed the concession and restroom facility at the same time. So, that project is slated to be done Monday, I hope. No, it looks to be done Monday. So, that one will be complete soon. The additional ask that we are requesting is we didn't put in the original cost to replace the roll downs. So, the roll down windows, so both of those and the roll down garage door, that's the additional ask for, for the October one budget. So, Marni Field Improvements. So, that, we have had Grady Minor on that project for the water and sewer connections. So, that is, we had a design for one location, but the Eagles gave us the property that we could possibly use for a concession building. Where we're at now is the additional ask and funding is for, we do, we need to do a lot split survey so that we can, can have that, our property combined and the Eagles separated out, as well as having Grady Minor rethink those water and sewer connections because of FPL does allow us to build a permanent building in that Eagles property location. Then it's, our current plans of water and sewer connections don't make sense. Because it's, one is at the southern part of the property and the new property is the very northern. And there are two BSU, we have been working with BSU. There are two connections. So, we would use BSU's connections in a different location. So, once we get the, the survey work completed and permission from FPL, then we'll rework that with Grady Minor. So, we still are under contract with them for this project.
So, that's, you're going to be talking to Grady Minor about undergrounding the power lines, correct?
That, we haven't put under contract.
The reason, the reason I'm asking it, just for clarity on it, the way that it's written, okay, so I was going to do a separate potential for, a separate potential CIP to start the process of putting money away for the undergrounding process via FPL. But then I saw in here, the underground utilities, and there's already money there. So, I'm like, well, we don't need new money if it's not...
So, so just to clarify, last year, we talked about having a placeholder because that was a, a goal. So, that's separate. I'm not, I'm not of the understanding that Q Grady Minor would be able to
No, we haven't.
Do electrical con- I think there would be...
But there is a separate underground already that doesn't need new funds, that is not...
You, you currently, so the, the line item for Marni Fields Underground Utilities, that, that is what you're, there's a placeholder. It is a hundred thousand, but it is not in the, so it, it is in planning. So, it's out in a further fiscal year.
Okay, so I wonder, okay.
Yeah, it's not included in the current improvements with Grady Minor. That's water and sewer concession.
The money is there hypothetically, so ramification, if we were to move it from an outgoing year to here and we actually are able to have discussions with FPL, hypothetically, we could move on it a year, this year, if we could get somewhere with them. Is that correct?
So, so you would need to request that it be, you know, moved into an earlier funding cycle.
And then, we would have to, to find another consultant to, to look into that.
When you deal with FPNL, there is no hiring a separate consultant.
Right, that's, no, we got to deal directly with FPL.
Hire FPNL and they tell you what the number is, and it's going to be way more than a hundred thousand dollars for that.
So, I think the fact that it's actually in the budget gives direction to staff to look into the item further. It, it actually is not funded, of course. But I think our recommendation is the funding would, a hundred thousand would begin to. So, we would have to come back to council anyway with some sort of proposal. And at that time, you would need to discuss how you'd want to fund it, whether there be grant application, whether there be general fund money. And then, you would make a budget amendment at that time to, to move it a little bit.
So, just, so first and foremost, we need to get a price from FPL. So, in order to get that done, I would like to recommend that we use our lobbyists to get to FPL's lobbyist. Cut, I mean, Nicole, obviously, you're on the call, but cut out any middlemen, get directly to lobbyist via the lobbyist we're paying anyways. And then, we can at least have the conversation. And then, they can tell us it's ten million dollars, they can tell us it's a hundred. But at least we know what we're looking at. And then, we don't go another budget cycle thinking, well, it's tough with FPL. Let's get FPL on the line, no pun intended, and, and then ask them what it's actually going to cost. And then, we can look to see if there's, if there's potential partners for it. Because the problem with this specifically is people are driving down Seventy-Five and this is what they see. So, my son's part of the soccer league, as you guys all know. You know, we have regional teams from Cape Coral, Naples, Astero, they all have these beautiful complexes. And then, they come over here and we have power lines over the soccer, over the kids playing soccer, and we have porta potties. So, and that is the only part of Benita that they see. So, I would like to figure out procedurally, even if they tell us it's a huge bill, at least we're starting the conversation. And then, we can use the appropriate pressure through a number of means to try to get them to play ball with us. But I just, I just don't want to be in this position next year where we're wondering if we can get FPL to talk. We, we pay a lobbyist to get FPL on the line. We already pay them. So, I think we can get a meeting with them and then we can move from there.
Well, I think the, the fact that it's, it's actually outlined in the CIP budget, and that's the direction we're hearing, then that wouldn't require additional funds for us because we already have a contract with the lobbyist. So, we can start those conversations. I think we have an idea of a number, what we're talking about and how we're going to pursue it. Then we would need to come back to you all with an appropriate budget amendment. And probably a presentation, probably more information. So, until we, we know more of what we're looking at.
At least if we know what the money it costs, we know what we're looking at. And then, we know if we're, are we calling the county and the state and the feds to all try to help? Are we getting, you know, transportation or resiliency dollars? You know, what are we, what are the, what are the buckets that we can try to, try to acquire money out of? But we can't get to any of that until we at least first know what the, what the price tag is going to be. So, then after that, then I think we can move. But I think this session, before session starts, we need to get with FPL and tell them we would like to have a discussion about it.
So, so what we've done in the CIP, as you can see, we've, we've categorized under project phase. So, basically, we look at this as our blueprint for the actions that you'd like us to take. So, either it's something that's in construction, which you've, you know, you've signed contracts for, you've let contracts. There's financial obligations to those. We're in design, which is a little bit of a, could be a little bit of a stopgap. You, if you've paid a designer to work on something, you can have the ultimate shelf plans if you decide to change a project or change your mind. But then, we have planning. So, we understand that planning is for us to take that as sort of our marching orders, to bring back more information. And then, if there's a, a need for additional funding, we would make you aware of that and move forward. So, I think there's enough sufficient direction to, to staff with it being as a place. We've talked about these in the CIP as placeholders, items we use. So, they don't financially impact the budget right now, but we understand that there's a goal to get there. And then, next fiscal year or in between, there's either a budget amendment or next fiscal year. If there's something identified, we can provide for that in the CIP then.
Okay, so, awesome. That's good. And if, do you have, are you done, Nicole? Because I have one more question for you on one of these projects.
I'm not finished, but...
Okay, nope, continue.
No, no, I just have a couple more, but you can...
Okay, Good Bread. Not to be controversial, but is the five hundred thousand dollars enough to do what we need to do? Or to do what needs to be done, whatever that might be?
That would be...
Sorry, Good Bread is... So, what we're looking at is we were directed by council to work with DPZ to reimagine the Lyles Plaza, to make it more attractive, more functional. We would, we had asked to include the, the Good Bread Grocery in that because we want to understand either a public use for it or how that was designed. Unfortunately, we did receive a draft scope. I still am working with DPZ through that. But with the loss of some staff, we had transition. I have been prioritizing FEMA. So, so we will need to re-circle on that. Additionally, we refocused DPZ's priority to reviewing the architecture for the Baron Collier project. So, we put all our eggs in that basket. So, as soon as we can refocus, we'll, we'll be working on that too. So, we also need to bring you back a contract with DPZ with that scope as well. But that was the idea to repopulate that area, bring more attraction. And then, we wanted to understand how Good Bread related to that so we could get some recommendations on making that more functional.
So, we, you feel as if we're in a comfortable spot where we don't need money or we don't need anything else?
I think at this time, until you have a design plan and then, and then that's been vetted by the community and the, and the council, that that's the direction you want to go, then we would plan for appropriately funding to make any of those improvements to the plaza that we discussed, or if, if we need to, or what we discuss as a plan.
Whatever happens to it. Got you.
Okay.
Good, thank you.
Just a couple more items. The Community Aquatic Facility Expansion. So, that project, as, as you know, we've, it is designed as a smaller project of the addition of a interactive water feature, so basically, a water playground. In discussions that we've had with all of you throughout CIP workshops, that you would prefer to see it be a much larger project because the current pool was built in the eighties, as well as we do have some failures with the buil- the building. So, we are redesigning this project as a whole. So, this, this will be, I'm not saying starting new because the interactive water feature pool is still in existence and will be, be happening, but it's not going to be built the same way it was before. So, we are, we did, we have reached out to different aquatic partners to look at a new redesign of a new facility as a whole.
Additionally, we have had interest from the middle school and the high school regarding the fact that middle, our middle school currently does not have a swim team because they don't have a home swim, swimming pool to utilize. Additionally, the high school is not, they use it for training, but they're not able to have home meets because it, it's not, it's, it's an older facility. It doesn't have, meet the current standards. So, these are, this is feedback we've received that we're going to implement into the design as well so that we can provide that as, be a partner as well.
Yep. So, that project just has taken a little bit of a different direction, but a better direction. So, we're still moving forward with that. But we will be reaching out, like I said, we are reaching out to different aquatic partners. And hopefully, we'll have a new design contract for you soon. The last thing I have is the Parks Master Plan. As you know, we did, Ellie got the CDBGDR grant for that project. So, the, we have been putting the, the scope together, as well as the bid package that the county has to review because it does have to follow their procurement policy. So, they have given us feedback and we're going to be working with them to hopefully get that project advertised as quickly as we can, and then that project will be moving forward. But we will be working with the county on that one since those funds did come through Lee County. One last thing, the Skate Park, I know it's still on your capital improvement plan, but that project is complete. So, I just wanted to give you that update. Do you have any questions to me?
One question, Nicole, on the Everglades Wonder Garden Cafe upgrades, is that... Has there been any decision? It says under construction, but is that really related to the cafe?
So, that is specifically the cafe.
It is specifically the cafe. That was, we had looked at...
You had some potential construction plans quite a few years ago. It's not been removed from the, from the, no action's been taken by, by the staff on that. It would be something that, if that's council's pleasure to discuss that facility with the Wonder Gardens, but there's been no action from staff on that. There was, at one point, a request, you know, to look at alternatives there, but that did not happen. So, it, so I would say that there's been no action taken now.
Well, there's no hammers and saw.
Correct, no.
No, no.
And then, just one I want to regroup together for you all is, so you do have Highway Monuments, Welcome Signs, Urban Design, and also the Imperial Benita Beach Road Improvements. So, preliminary, I know that you had kind of, council member Perdon had had a, a design. We did a little scope beyond what we did with the Gateway Master Plan. He has had outreach. I have continued outreach with County Manager Harner. Additionally, I have been in conversations with County Manager Harner about improvements to the Benita Beach accesses. One of the things we've noticed in Collier County is they have a device that they can tell when a lot is full. a lot is full. So that we, one of the complaints we receive a lot is, is a little bit of the rubbernecking, where everyone stops to see if the lots are full. And so we're looking at technology for that, that Collier County already implements. So he would like to work in partnership with us, and there's a potential of looking at TDC dollars. So when that comes forward, we will look at that as well.
Where are we at with the welcome signs, the monuments and all that?
So.
Hasn't that been about a year since we?
So we, we prioritized with council, I think it was Logan Boulevard is an easy one, and, and the beach monuments that Arlene's talking about. So we have been, one of my staff members has been working with a, a design build contractor on one of our continuing services lists. And probably by the end of this month, we'll have design scopes for Logan's welcome sign, as well as for the beach accesses, incorporating this lot full technology. Now, I don't want to speak for that part, because we, we do need to meet with the county and talk to them a little bit more so. But yeah, you'll, you'll have design contracts will be available to us probably by the end of the month on moving those things forward.
How about for the downtown core business?
The direction we received was for Logan and, and the beach accesses. So those are the two that we've been working on.
Have all the public, have all the public restrooms, we have anything to do with down on the beach? They're all in good shape now?
So the county operates the public restrooms there, and I know that, I do not believe they've all been repaired since Ian.
They haven't done a thing down on there.
They have not been, Access 10, as well as Benita Beach Park are not complete.
Horrible. Deplorable.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Could we, Arlene, do you think we could reach out to Harner and, from the county, and touch base on the restrooms that were just referenced, specifically 10? I know that's a very popular one. And just see what, if we can get a timeline on those up and running.
The next category we have is environmental protection. I don't know if there was anything specific you wanted to touch on in there. I mean, included is the conversion project for sanitary sewer.
Yeah, I can, I can give it up.
Yep, just briefly, because I would like to get to the cat, to the.
The first, I'll just give you a, a very brief update on the first two, on the environmental protection. There, it's the beach. There's the standard beach renourishment project, as well as the South Benita Beach project, which came out of Hurricane Ian. It was bid this summer, and we have favorable pricing that fits within the grant scope, the dollars that we received. So that will, the county, as you may recall, we entered into an interlocal with them. They normally handle the, the recurring project, but the, the berm project, so to speak. We in court rolled into this project to a degree. So they will both move forward likely after turtle nesting season. So start time sometime after November of this year.
Okay, and so that's about a 5.3 million dollar?
You've got.
Seventy-seven and four.
Well, I don't, the, the exact numbers, I don't have them off the top of my head. I know the, the South Beach project came in a little lower than the grant dollars we received, which was shown in the budget, which is good, because you, you have a unit price. You know, obviously, we had some storm surge. So that, that volume that you're putting of sand is a dynamic number to begin with. You know, you get a storm and it makes it higher. So the fact that the bid came in underneath the, the money we received, that gives us some good flexibility.
Continuing on, I'll take strengthening city finances. This is the request, I think it was formerly council member Fullick, we've asked that we put in some disaster reserve allocation each fiscal year to keep building up reserves. And then we also have government transparency, increase outreach, technology enhancements. That was the building fund, utilizing some in technology enhancements to the building department. But we also have technology infrastructure planning at 250,000. That was previously council member Corey's request. So we're still looking, at one point was grant opportunities available, or other outreach we can do to enhance technology or access to both self-service and Wi-Fi service throughout the city.
That's good. I, I wonder if, I love that that's still in there. I think that's huge. I think it's one of the most important things we as a council can do, is get better service throughout the city.
Dark.
As far as, is there somebody talking?
I know.
Uh, it's a com, and I could be wrong, but I want to say Comcast is probably the biggest player in this game, right? So I would think that it'd probably be appropriate, and I, I don't know if, you know, League of Cities next week is the appropriate venue, or if they come here. But I think setting up a meeting with Comcast and us officially as a city to just explore what the options look like. So we put money as a placeholder, but I'll be honest, I don't know what the contract with the municipality might look like. It could be a scenario where there's significant infrastructural components that we have paid for, or it could be a deal where they're going to do all of it, and they get something out of it by being the people who put it in. So I don't know exactly what it looks like. But again, similar to the other deal, until we know what we're looking at, we really don't know. So I think trying to expedite a meeting with Comcast would probably be beneficial for us.
That's very possible, Jesse, because there are cities of similar size throughout the United States that have gone that route with, whether it be Comcast, Hotwire, whatever, to basically provide internet and telephone cell service. I mean, so yeah, there's things to look at. So I don't know how the, what the contract looks like, but there's, there's examples out there. So we'll take it on to the technology committee.
Perfect.
Get that done.
Right. So you think you all could facilitate setting up the meetings for that? Perfect. Okay.
Just a question for all of us, Arlene. Do we know when, and how many contracts do we have with Comcast, Comcast one or multiple, as far as the city goes?
So those are private service providers, such as Hotwire, Comcast. So if you recall quite a few years, well, maybe about a year and a half ago, two years ago, post COVID, really, we had a lot of ink requests for additional, people weren't able to connect, too many people were connecting at the same time. So we began some outreach conversations. At that point, a government association person from Comcast reached out to us to make it clear that there was proprietary maps. It, so it would make sense to maybe invite them back to do one-on-one meetings with council members again, and start, and maybe come to the Technology Advisory Board. So we don't have the actual contracts with them, but they have the ability to be in our right of ways. And then, and some individual homeowners associations contract with them directly to provide services within their community. So they work a plan of putting the infrastructure in with the guarantee of ser, of customers for some length of time to cover their build out. When we were looking at this, in unders, there's a difference between underserved and ser, and service issues. So there's an underserved community. There are, there are programs for folks who cannot afford internet to their own home. That's the underserved community. But then there's a definition, there's two separate definitions. There was grant funding that was supposed to become available to us, but we were made aware that if we pursued the grant funding back then at that time, that carriers that had infrastructure already in the ground would make sure that their proprietary maps were provided to the grant provider. So we would not be able to get those funds, because the service was already there. People just needed to connect to the service. So I think that would be, we have new council members who've never had an opportunity to have those meetings or see the maps, and I think that would be helpful in understanding how, you know, how they operate.
Well, the timing's everything. So the reason for my question was, is there a better time than others? Is there any sort of leverage that we can use time-wise? That's, that was basically what my question was.
I want to say part of the deal when we met with them was towers. They needed to do towers, and we had to do locations. And they had a couple, if you remember, they had a couple of different models of what these would look like, and they showed us some from the other coast that looked like, you know, coconut trees or whatever it is. And, and it was, I think we even, from the city level staff, I think we located a couple potential areas where we could even do it. But I think there was discussion on how many we would need, how tall they would have to be, and I don't think we got as far in the conversation as what the finances would look like. But I imagine it's probably similar to what they do at Benita Bay, but just for a city, I'd imagine, but.
Well, yeah, I mean, most of the gated communities that I'm aware of have bulk contracts for internet and telephone service.
Maintenance on these Century Link, the green boxes that are all beat up all over town, is there any chance to get them to?
The green ones?
Clean up the mess?
If, if they're green, green rectangular boxes?
Yeah.
It's, uh, it's good news, because that's Benita Springs Utilities, and we can certainly talk to them.
No, 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 not, not the, these are the phones, Century Link, used to be embargoed.
We can, we can talk to them, we can use our code folks to talk to them.
They're all beat up, taped together, and, and it's been, the storm's been two years almost, and that's just a maintenance problem with, for them. They don't have any money, but anyways. I'm sorry, go ahead.
At this time, I want to move on to our other capital projects. And if Laura Taylor will come up, please, I want to review some of these major ones. These are ones that are not specifically in a strategic priority category, but are part of the city's services.
Hello, I'll make it very brief for you, because I know you've been through a long, long workshop. So as you will call, city council received the building assessment report in the last budget cycle. In December, council held a workshop, just looking for some guidance towards which renovation projects we would do first. But you also gave us authority to go forward and do the priority one fixes to some of our facilities. That would be life safety concerns. So we've been working along doing those. We have a city hall ADA sidewalk improvement project that's been completed. The city hall pocket park has been completed. City hall parking lot improvements project has been completed. Generator project is 95% complete. City hall now has a new generator, and our old generator has been refurbished, is at Parks and Rec. We're just going to be doing some closeout meetings on that in September, and then that will be complete. We are working on our city hall elevator modernization project. We are looking probably about another month up to two to have that complete. We are for priority one item over at the pool building. We've done block repair, painting, replaced power panels, replaced hollow metal storefront, and we continue to do repairs at that building. We're working with Parks and Rec on some of those. We're also looking at the old library and getting some of the repairs there quoted. There's some air conditioning issues and roofing issues there that we're looking at currently.
And additionally, we're going to be looking at coming to you all for some direction. You have provided direction to staff to work towards making that a permanent facility for neighborhood services, as well as partnering with LCSO for that facility. We'd like to start some conversations with you about what that means in the long term, because at certain, that, there is flood issues with that building, and it's below grade. So the 50% rule, which we're all following, will, will kick in. So we're going to be discussing what our vision is for that, and is there a need for, you know, emergency response there as well in that facility?
You're talking about the old library?
The old library, yes.
As we do the priority one repairs, we are also working with our, our management team to look at the major renovations of each facility. We're working with Weston and Sampson to contract for security assessments on the facilities. First, we will be doing the recreation center, and we're going to be under contract with that very shortly. And then city hall will, will follow pretty quickly there. But we do plan to do security assessments on each facility. And that's, that's my update.
And then also Laura and Nicole both will be working with Weston and Sampson on any significant improvements to the Wonder Gardens. As you see, there was a CIP for us to have some funding there should we need it. But also, as their projects come forward, Weston and Sampson will be reviewing those for compliance with ADA and, and minimum building code and giving us recommendations on, on their proposals, so that we can make sure we're satisfying the actual, the plan, the assessment we had. So I know we're a little tight on time, but we do have an agenda item to further discuss your wants. So we, we're, we're willing to listen for the few minutes we have before council starts as well. But also, you'll have more time during the city council meeting to provide more direction to us also.
I need a restroom break.
Yeah.
Sissy.
So, we're, we're, we've concluded our presentation.
Okay, we're adjourned for?
Five minutes or so.
Five minutes?
Five thirty. We'll be back.
Bring it up then. Where's Nicole?
Nicole?
She's right.